Good evening. I will call to order the Tuesday, June 24th Timneth Town Council Meeting. Ms. Peters Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
All right. Looks like everyone is present and accounted for. We also this evening have the Timneth Landings General Improvement District Board Meeting. That will take place after our regular council meeting. For anyone that's tuning in for that, are there any requests to amend the agenda this evening? All right. Move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on matters important to town. This evening we have two items that are set for public hearings, Item 7A and 7B. If anyone wishes to speak on those items, we would wait, ask you to wait until we get to those specific agenda items. But we can now take general public comment. It looks like we have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Carl Elliott. Welcome, sir. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Mayor and Town Council and everyone else here. Just a few comments. I'm a Colorado native, native to Timneth, lived here all of my life. We're seeing a lot of changes in the town, as most of you know. Had a couple of issues I wanted to address tonight. And the first one I'd like to talk about is our new parkway going through town that allows easy access and access to the rest of the community and gets rid of the traffic off of Main Street, which was the intent of the parkway, I believe. But right now, I'm having a little situation where that parkway is not easy access for me. I'm coming in from Dixon Street, come over on Second Avenue, turn and go south on Main Street, and then I get down here at just about where the Circle, New Circle Drive is, and turn on Cornhusker Avenue, which brings me right over to the parkway. And I make a right-hand turn and right out of town over to Harmony Road. Sweet. But when I come back, I come in on Harmony Road, turn on, on the parkway and come up here, and I cannot make a left turn onto Cornhusker. There's a whole bunch of little yellow posts not allowing me to turn left. The people across from that, on Deer Trail, they can't make a left-hand turn on the parkway to get out to Harmony. They have to turn and go north up to Second Avenue and make a U-turn and come back down. When you're down there on Cornhusker and you want to go straight across, we've got all those crazy little yellow markers preventing that from happening, double yellow lines. Not very handy at all. That intersection should be a wide-open intersection so we can go straight across, we can make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn. Defeating the purpose. The parkway's great, except it's not very handy. When I have to go up to Second Avenue off a parkway and turn, I come across two severe dips in the street there on Lystrum, Lystrum Court. And those dips are so severe, the spoiler on my car hits. I have to slow down five miles an hour and dip across there. That's putting traffic into residential neighborhoods. Wrong move. Don't, don't need to put the extra traffic into the neighborhoods. So anyway, that's my, that's my complaint. That's, that's the way I see it. This is not very handy at all. The second thing I would like to address.
Mr. Elliott, we've, we've got about 30 seconds left of your time, okay?
Okay. Get bad food in a bad restaurant, you complain. And that's what I'm here to do tonight. Twenty of us, Old Town residents in Timneth, lost our wells and they're not coming back. So the people out here in Park Lakes could have nice little lake to walk around. They stole our water. I had adjudicated well, and they stole our water, and they're pumping the excess water off into the river, and our wells are not coming back. Our wells were measured two weeks ago, and they're still dry. Twenty wells. They stole the water. And the town allowed it to happen. I don't appreciate it. And the rest of us that lost our wells, we don't appreciate it either. So that needs to get turned around and turned around fast. These people out here in Timneth Lakes, they can do without the little lakes. If they want a lake, go to a lake and walk around it. But they stole our water so they could have lakes. I don't appreciate it. We were here. We were here first. If they want a lake, go to a lake. But don't steal our water. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you taking time to speak with us today. All right. It's the only person I have signed up. I'll ask now if there's anyone present who did not sign up but would like to address council this evening. All right. I don't see anyone. So we will move on to our consent agenda, which consists of one item, approval of the June 10th, 2025 Town Council Minutes. Counsel, any requests to pull that item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Consent agenda passes 5-0. We'll now move on to mayor and council reports. I'll start over here this week.
I think some of mine is covered actually in the Parks and Rec staff report, but we did have our post-committee meeting last week, I believe. This was our first meeting with our three new Parks and Rec committee members. So thank you to all of them for coming. And just want to give a push for people to follow the new Parks and Rec social media accounts. So if you have Facebook or Instagram, just take a couple of minutes, and that will help you to stay up to date on all of the upcoming events that'll be happening.
Thank you, Councilmember Lake. Councilmember Holt?
No real report. Just want to welcome, I think, our newest, at this point, business into town, Dutch Bros. Any of you that love delicious drinks, go give them a try. They've got the drive-through pretty well figured out, too, but stay away from the extreme sugar drinks, especially if you're kids, I heard. And yeah, welcome them to town, that that area is, that's coming along really well, and they did a really good job on that project, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, so, two things. I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony a little over a week ago at the Carol Draley Park in the new Draley subdivision. Dutch Draley was there along with Carol, their grandkids, their son and daughter-in-law. And it's a beautiful park. It has the red barn in there. They had the red barn open. There also is a water fountain and a, and bathrooms there, as well as some large picnic tables and a picnic table in the shade. It is a public park, and it can be reserved for parties through Pinnacle Consulting. Pinnacle is in Loveland, and they typically handle a lot of the metro district, open space areas. So that's available for reservations. And then the other thing that several of council members and staff did this past week was go on a, on Friday, we went on a tour of Habitat for Humanity structures in, primarily in Fort Collins, and beautiful, beautiful, affordable housing. So that was, that was pretty interesting. And you couldn't tell it was affordable housing. It looked like just the rest of the neighborhood. So very impressed with, with what we saw. So thanks to staff for setting that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Yeah, I want to also thank staff, Scott and Logan and Susan for setting up that tour. You know, it was very interesting to see all the different kinds of housing being built and the different, I guess you'd call it, you know, different stages of people's lives that was out there. Also want to thank Phil with the Planning Commission, Councilman Holt, Logan, Debbie. We've been doing the Main Street interviews. So we've been doing a lot of those, but I think it was about 10 hours we did interviews for that board. We've got one more left, so we're almost through those. But a lot of work, a lot of great candidates again. So looking forward to the next part of that process.
Great. Thank you. And just kind of piggyback off that, I want to take a moment and thank all the council members for all the work that, that you've been putting in. You know, we're all volunteer up here, and, and I know each you are putting in a lot of time, whether it's Councilmember Lake with the Post Committee, Mayor Pro Tem Wagner, Councilmember Holt on the Old Town Committee, Councilmember Jenkins on the NFRPO, NF?
North Front Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yeah, yeah. And then also I know Councilmember Holt and Jenkins represented the town in a matter last week, which, which I appreciated that. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of you and want you to know how much I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into our community here. Anything else before we move on to staff reports? All right. We'll begin with finance. Ms. Galliardi.
I don't have anything to add to the finance report unless there's questions, but I did want to take one minute to introduce our new staff member, Stephanie Moss. She's our new procurement and contract specialist. She's been with us about a month, and she has background in federal procurement and teaching. So she's been a great asset so far.
Lisa, welcome. Lisa, I do have one question for you. Sorry. I saw on the budget, so I should have, the federal safety action grant, I think it was like 220K.
Yep.
Any idea? I know it's in the budget for the year, but it was a big number, and I just was wondering if any updates on that one.
We're waiting on the feds to determine when that'll get signed and when they'll authorize that funding. And once they do, then we'll put out an RFP for that work. But it will likely get pushed, at least part of it, into 2026, I imagine.
Thanks, Lisa.
No question, but a comment. This kind of ties into what the mayor was mentioning as well. I know that you will be working on scheduling out our budget sessions. I know that was listed in here. And one thing that I am hoping that you or staff can look at is, one of the things that I've kind of been talking about or thinking about, and then I've also heard from some community members, is the possibility of adding some kind of stipend or pay for council. We are one of the few in the area that is completely volunteer. And I was wondering if during one of our work sessions, we can just look at what that potentially might look like, if that's something that other council members would like to take a look at. Basically, how we could go about incorporating it, what other communities are paying, what kind of time commitment they do, things like that. And I figure I'll just mention it now since we don't have our budgets scheduled yet, but I know it's in the near future.
No, I appreciate that. And CML publishes that information, so we'll have some data to compare for you to consider.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. And I know Ms. Steffel's out seeing the world today, and we have a pin-shitting legal counsel. But I believe our town charter speaks to the process on compensation and, and what that would need to look like. So maybe we could incorporate that in that work session as well. All right. Moving on to public works, Director Stone.
Yeah, just wanted to update one item in your council report. There was the Main Street Railroad project that did get completed on Friday. So if you've been by there, you'll see it's operating.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. So I noticed I was in Old Town today, and there's a buckled sidewalk. It, it looks like it's completely impassable. I presume that's due to heat, but I don't know.
Yes. If you remember, there was a 100-degree temperature. So typically, sometimes concrete will do that, where it'll, what's called a blow up. But it's basically expansion from the heat. So we are aware of it. It's barricaded off.
Right.
And we're going to get that fixed.
Okay. Just wanted to mention it because I'm sure Old Town folks that use the sidewalk are concerned about it.
All right. Anything else for public works? And we will move on to community development. Director Robinson. I do not have anything to update, but happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
I've got a question for you, Sam. I've just noticed this. I was looking through, since you had a smaller report. It looks like for commercial, we've had 82 applications and only nine permits for the commercial on your report. Can you just help me understand? Is this just normal? Is this just large projects? Is this all kind of part of the process of where we are? And it seems like for 82 permits, or excuse me, 82 applications that only have nine permits, I just wanted to understand.
Is it for new applications, councilmembers?
Yeah, it's just, sorry, my, my, my iPad's down, but it's right on your development, on the front page. It says 82 applications for commercial and only nine permits?
Yeah. So the, a lot of those other applications are for internal remodels, that sort of thing. So the, the nine would be new commercial applications, which would be multifamily or commercial. So we do have a couple new multifamily projects in the pipeline. Most of that has been foundation work right now. Then we've had a couple new commercial applications over in the Ladera area for a couple restaurants. I know some, the Corn Shell Building over here, there's three commercial permits. I don't know if it was included last month or this month, but restaurant, dry cleaner and a hair salon, that's a tenant finish. So that technically wouldn't be a new permit, but that's like a remodel in the commercial permit. So month over month, we don't see a lot of new in that category. Again, majority of our permits that we see for Timneth are residential. So I haven't seen any trends that indicate one way or the other on that.
I do have a question for Scott. So with regard to the concerns for the drywells in Old Town, it's my understanding that the developer has, has a period of time to cure that issue in some way. Could you just kind of tell us the, the timeframe and what, what the cure options are?
So it was part of a condition of approval with the site plan. So when the augmentation pond was approved, there was a condition that the wells be monitored. So there was a measurement taken before construction of the augmentation pond or soon after to get a baseline. When the pond and the lakes were kind of completed or filled, there was another period to come out and remeasure the wells. And then that started a two-year kind of shot clock where the developer and well owners have an opportunity to negotiate, either to re-drill the well or some other options. So I do believe they've almost conducted all the, the wells. They've included a couple extras. I think there's a couple properties that are still waiting to, to get permission to go onto the site, to monitor, to re-monitor the well. Not all of them are dry, but most of them are still dry.
So to, to the point, under the conditions, there has to be a resolution to the, presumably to the satisfaction of the well owners within this two-year period.
Right. So that, it gives two years for the property owner to work with the developer on that timeframe.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hopefully that's helpful.
I just have a question, just to piggyback off of Luke's. So my understanding from what you just said is, so new commercial means ground-up building, not necessarily a building that's existing that is having new businesses in it, even though there's building involved? Yeah, there's lots of different permits. So I call the data to only kind of show kind of new activity. So there's, you know, hot water heater permits and things like of that nature, one-stop permits. There's a lot of those that come in. That's typically things that I don't include in there. So the stuff that you're seeing is mostly new construction, and those are alterations. Or the one above, or the, I guess the graph above that would be the tenant finish, CC. What's the difference between CC and CO? Core, CC would be, you guys got stuck in me here. CO, Certificate of Occupancy. Got to go back and look at the CC, but that would be probably the tenant finish that I was talking about.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Parks and Rec, Director Xol.
I don't have anything to add unless you guys have any questions for me. So we have the survey, the public opinion survey closes on Friday. So a couple more days of collecting data, and we'll go from there.
How's, how's it going so far?
Pretty good. Yeah, things, things are looking well, but, you know, don't want to count those even before they hatch, so.
But we're getting the numbers.
Yeah, we're getting a very good turnout. So.
I mean, that's critical to make sure that we have a statistically significant number of responses, so we get a true sense of what the community wants.
Yeah, from my understanding, they've already, they've already counted 500 responses.
Now, that's great.
And that's a combination of the text messages ones versus the online ones versus the, I mean, we, there's a bunch of different ways they can take it. So they've counted about 500 responses so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then finally, Police Sergeant Rarity.
Nothing to add unless you guys have any questions on the information that Chief Robinson's given to you guys.
Councilmember questions?
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. All right. That takes care of our reports. Commander Adams, anything to add? Nope. Okay. Under our regular business items, starting with Item 6A, First Reading and Setting a Public Hearing on July 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for Ordinance Number Nine, Series 2025, and Ordinance Approving a Petition to Include Property Within the Ladera Business District. As a reminder, we used to do these first readings on consent, but what I asked staff to do on these first readings is just give us a brief Cliff Notes version so that council and the public can be better prepared to, to research and participate in the public hearing when it actually occurs. So with that, Director Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'll make this brief. So again, this is First Reading and Setting a Public Hearing for July 8th, 2025 for Ordinance Number Nine, Series 2025. Town received a petition to include property within the Ladera Business Improvement District. We received the application material in early May. Just want to give a high-level overview of what this includes. As a refresher, the Ladera Business Improvement District was established in 2021. It's pretty much covers Phase One. It's about 64 acres, which is highlighted in yellow. Sorry for the, the colors there, but that's the area that was addressed with the Phase One. Future areas were identified for inclusion, which includes the entirety of the remainder of the site seen on the map on the screen. The petition to expand the boundary of the bid, approximately 14 acres is the green shaded area on the diagram on the right. Every year, the town must approve operating plans annually. And the purpose of the bid can include financing, acquisition of property, construction, installation, replacement and/or maintenance of services within the district. This request is time-sensitive. There's intent to issue bonds. I understand the bond market is pretty volatile, so it's a good time to do that. Currently, the bid does not have any debt, as I understand. They have intended to issue bonds in the past, but this year they're ready to pull the trigger. Just as an overview from their 2025 operating plan, they did identify a capital budget of $30 million. This request, they intend to look for issuing bonds around $25 million. So it again is within the budget. They did identify about $30 million in expenses, as highlighted here. Just as an overview on the bid, the district does have a metro district for one and two. One's a commercial, another one's for residential. It's set at a maximum debt ceiling of $95 million. They do have the ability to leverage up to 50 mils in property tax. They also have a covenant for public improvement transportation fee for up to 0.5% sales tax. And the town does have a little bit of a tax credit up to $5 million for some portions within Phase One of the Ladera project. If there are any other information that you'd like to have in preparation for July 8th, please let me know. Otherwise, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council, understanding that we'll have a full hearing on this. Any urgent questions? All right. Then is there a motion to approve on First Reading and to set a public hearing on July 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the Ordinance Approving a Petition to Include Property Within the Ladera Business District?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right. We will see everyone for a public hearing on July 8th at 6:00 PM. Moving on to Item 6B, First Reading and Setting a Public Hearing for the same date, July 8th at 6:00 PM for Ordinance 10, Series 2025, Ordinance Approving the Timneth Landings Plan Development Overlay Amendment Number Two. Mr. Kemper?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This application is seeking to amend the Plan Development Overlay District for the remaining 252 acres of the Timneth Landing Subdivision, known to be referred to as the Timneth Lakes North. The intent of the PD overlay is to make modifications to dimensional standards, the table within the Timneth Land Use Code. The application proposes changes to dimensional requirements such as setbacks in lot configurations with the intent to provide a variety of housing types. So the extent of the original Timneth Landings Plan Development Overlay consists of Parcels One and Two of the Timneth Landing Subdivision first filing. Together, those parcels contain roughly 497 acres. So again, the proposed amendment will seek to amend the overlay for the remaining 252 acres of undeveloped land, which is highlighted in blue on the screen. And that is the brief overview of just the request to provide modifications to our table of dimensional standards within the land use code. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel, any urgent questions? Very cool. Is there a motion to approve on First Reading and to set a public hearing for July 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for Ordinance 10, Series 2025, Ordinance Approving the Timneth Landing Plan Development Overlay Amendment Number Two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right. It passes 5-0, and we will have public hearing on July 8th at 6:00 PM. Item 6C, Resolution Number 46, Series 2025, a resolution authorizing broadband funding for 2025. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present for your consideration a resolution approving pulse broadband funding for the remainder of '25. Just a little background on the history of the project. On August 8th of 2023, Just a little background on the history of the project. On August 8th of 2023, council approved a resolution in support of broadband for the Timneth. At that meeting, the, an intergovernmental agreement or IGA with Loveland Pulse was also approved. And then Funding Authorization Number One was also approved, and that was just under a million dollars. So that got the project started and, and off and rolling. Last April, council approved Funding Authorization Number Two for $7.7 million. And so that's really when the, the meat and potatoes of the project got going. Tonight, for your consideration, we're asking you to approve Funding Authorization Number Three in the amount of $5.5 million. So Funding Authorization Number Three includes project management, construction management in the amount of $320,000, and that's a direct contract between Loveland Pulse and Itesco, their project manager. It includes site construction at just over $4 million. That would cover sites 13 through 24. And that will complete construction within most of Timneth, south of Bus Grove. And at the end, I'll show you a map that kind of, kind of shows you where all of that is. And that's the conduit, the pole boxes, the fiber. So that's complete construction of, of those sites. And also included in this authorization is premise installs at $1 million. That amounts to about 800 customers. And that connects those customers directly to the network. So when, once we put the network in place, then the premise installs, you know, this, this fee covers that. Once we reach a 40% take rate, then Pulse will pay for those premise installs. So we haven't reached that level yet, but we're getting there. And once we reach 40%, we don't have to pay that, that cost anymore. With that, staff recommends approval of resolution 46. I was worried about this map, but that big screen helps. So you can see the green and the blue line. Those are the main core routes that come, one from Tarm again and one basically up from Wildwing, the two main core routes. The colored areas are what we call sites, and so they're essentially neighborhoods. And you can see the diagonal line that runs across the community. That's the railroad. So we have completed all sites south of the railroad plus Site One, which is along Harmony to date. And now we're going to start moving north of Harmony. And so when I was mentioning, we will complete construction in the community from Bus Grove South. That, so that core part of the community will be completed with this funding authorization. Subsequent funding authorizations will take care of Wildwing and Saratoga and Kitchell up in there. And that'll probably be in 2026. So be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Questions?
So you said that we're not quite at that 40%. Do you happen to have updated numbers to know where we are at?
That's top secret information. We, we've been talking about that quite a bit. So next month, when we produce our monthly dashboard and report, you'll start seeing those statistics. So the way Pulse does this is they basically wait 90 days before they make the statistic official. I will say that we're doing quite well in the areas that we have started in. In fact, at least one site is already at 20% take rate, so. Doing quite well, but we'll start reporting those statistics in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Customer help? Yep. This, this has been a project that I'm excited about, love hearing all the success stories of it. And then I decided to move out of the initial area all the way up to that Kitchell area. And I get asked all the time in ours, and you said 2026, do you have a rough idea of, of when maybe Go Live would be up north?
Late 26, probably early 2027.
Okay, that's fair. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and so current install includes Old Town currently?
This funding authorization would include Old Town.
Okay, so we don't have Old Town installed yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's with, with Funding Authorization Three, we will.
Okay, good. It certainly would help the businesses there to have high speed internet.
So just a question here on council, how many people have or going to have? Well, I guess, Lisa, you're.
I signed up today, so.
So you've got a bill?
And I think all of, almost all of my immediate permanent neighbors have installed it as well. I'm thrilled with the service. It's cheaper than what I was paying by a lot and way faster. And so far, fingers crossed, no outages. They, I would say the install didn't go as perfectly as it could have. They cut my irrigation lines twice, but they repaired it, so. It happens.
So it sounds like there's two council members that don't quite have it yet. Okay. So I'm not going to approve funding at this point then. No, but my question was, as, as we get more residents and we look kind of towards the future and we do these funding authorizations, is there, are we going to touch base with residents to come on satisfaction, or is that something Pulse does? How do we know as we move forward, this is successful and residents are happy with this project?
I, I would say that's likely a function of Pulse directly, and, and I can check on that. We have a, a project meeting on Monday. I can ask that question, what their intent and plans are.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That'd just be helpful as we get the numbers, like in the future, making sure the dollars are paying off. And then, so looking at this, if we do the, the funding authorization, I think, are we up to 14.2 million? Is that right? Am I thinking of that right, Lisa? Did I see that? Like, if we go back a couple of slides?
Yeah, 14,135,943 dollars.
Okay.
In this portion, I think there are some other costs that aren't included in those numbers, so.
Okay.
14.2 is probably pretty close.
Okay, so, so, and we're, so we're on budget, we're on targets, no concerns at this point that, because I know there was trouble in other cities and towns, and so feeling pretty comfortable with our target on our budget on this.
I do feel very comfortable, and I will say the project, and I'll knock on wood, is going quite well. We have an occasional complaint about, you know, broken sprinkler systems, or we've had a couple of complaints about the amount of utility locate marks in, out in the field. But in general, it's gone quite well and, and everyone's been very happy with it.
Great, thank you.
I, I think it's also worth noting that as one of the county commissioners reminded me in Larimer County that the county put in well over a million dollars to help get Pulse into Timneth. And, and I think it's in part because it also provides access for county residents as well. So the trunk line.
In, in unincorporated? Because I don't remember anything. Is it to the town, do you know?
No, no, it doesn't have anything to do with the town per se, other than they contributed to help bring the trunk lines out of Loveland to us.
I believe they helped fund getting it to Tarm again. Is that correct?
And Pulse and the county also have an IGA where the, where Pulse is expanding into areas of the county.
I guess my questions are, I, I thought Luke was going down the direction of, look, we all have it and you're not getting it. So I was a little, little offended, but yeah, it's still going that direction. Good. What, what is, and it reminded me, what is the overall budget, once it's all complete, once we go up north, 2027? What, what will be the fourth?
As I recall, I think the overall budget was around 20 million. Does that sound right, Lisa?
Okay, I, I guess my, my question, not to play doom and gloom, but if, if we don't get that hit rate, right? And if it doesn't hit 40 or plus percent, which from the satisfactory that people are seeing, you know, and, and the success and cost savings, I think we'll get there, right? But if we don't, does that hinder the opportunity moving forward?
I, I think what that essentially does is it extends your rate, return on your investment. So I think currently the ROI is around 20 to 22 or 25 years.
Sure.
If we had a lower take rate, obviously that return on investment is going to be much longer.
Gotcha. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Smith, I, I know we'll get some more detailed information, but do you know right now, either as a percentage of town households or, or as a number, how many folks are currently eligible for, for Pulse?
We have completely built out and they're service ready in five sites, so. One, two, three, four, and five. And it might actually include six, because I, I'm not sure we're counting Site One, which is where 4,800 Goodman is. So we have five sites ready.
So five of 24, so roughly 20% of the way there?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then is there a motion to approve the authorization for broadband funding for 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Come from Lake, it's your motion.
I just want to encourage any community member who has not gone on to the Timneth Pulse website to go on there. You can enter your address to see if it's available at your home. And if it's not, you can still sign up to get the updates. So I got the email yesterday that I was eligible now at my home. So they'll email you when you are able to sign up. I cannot testify to how good it is, because it's not actually being installed until the middle of July. But they are offering locked in rates for five years without having to sign a contract. So I, I know that was one of the selling points for my family. I think one of you mentioned that it was a lot lower than what you were paying, and same here. And knowing that you can lock in for those five years is nice. But just letting community members know that there is a way to get information, there is a way to get updates, so just sign up for that.
Yeah, I'm going to continue to support this project as we move Timneth into the future. I really see this as an opportunity to move our businesses forward, move our community forward, kind of future perfect was the goal. So I, I see, you know, I look at our future of this town, I don't see our need for data and the internet becoming less, so I'm going to continue to support this.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, I, I support it. I've supported it from the beginning. I think it's, it is an important infrastructure item, and I'm glad the town is in a position to support having it installed. And just to remind everybody, we do get our money back. And presumably it will help businesses as well as, as homeowners. So I think in the long run, it's really a smart thing for the town to have done. So I will be supporting it.
Councilmember Hall?
No, I mean, I'll, I'll echo everybody's point of view. Wish I got it sooner. But no, I think it's a great, I mean, the, I've heard nothing but great things. And I'm okay with extra locates if we're being safe out there too. So yeah, I'm in full support of it. I also continue to be a cheerleader of this project. I am really impressed that in six months, we have gotten 20% of the, the town eligible for service. I mean, it really has progressed quickly. The feedback that, that I hear has been just overwhelmingly positive, both in terms of price and of service. And the complaints really have, have been quite minimal. You know, I, I don't like the, the paint on my, on my sidewalk when, when they did the, the locate or, or my sprinkler got cut. But, but even on, on those complaints, what I've heard is that they've been responsive. They've, they've made things right when, when they had to. So, so things really do seem to be going well. I think it makes sense to continue to walk the path that, that we started, and I will support it.
One more comment. What I learned recently also is that Pulse has on their repairs, if you have a problem with your, with your sod or with your sprinkler heads, et cetera, that they've moved that, that function in-house. It was initially contractors, and so communication, when you have a third party, isn't always as smooth as you would like, and they've moved that in-house. So I think that's a good step on, on Pulse's part from a customer service perspective.
And all those in favor of approving the resolution authorizing broadband funding for 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, carries unanimously. We will now move on to our items for public hearing. So for each of these, we'll have a staff presentation, then if applicable, an applicant presentation. At that point, I will request public comment. After public comment, we will proceed with questions and then a motion. We'll begin with resolution number 47, series 2025, resolution approving Ladera subdivision filing number three. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Resolution 47, series 2025, approving the Ladera Minor Subdivision Third Filing. The subject property is just south of Florin Decor, just west of Weitzel Street, east of I-25, and just north of the Connel Resources Up, Current Operations. This property was platted as one lot. In part of the second filing, it was a 9.587 acre lot, and they're replating that into five smaller lots. This doesn't include any site plans. Those will come at a future date. This is just creating five lots from what was one lot. The process is, well, of a minor subdivision is that the Planning Commission recommends, and then the town council does the final approval. Last week, we took it to Planning Commission. It was recommended for approval unanimously five zero. We did the proper public notification, physically posting on the property, and the letters were sent to owners within 500 feet. And the notice was published in the Coloradoan. The existing zoning on the property is the RC, which is the Regional Commercial Zone. And it does have a PD overlay that is part of the Ladera subdivision. And the comprehensive plan shows a future land use designation of employment slash regional commercial, which is, is consistent with the, the regional commercial zoning on the property. This is a diagram of the five lots. So the, on the north side, you've got Luna Vista Drive, which is that existing street, private street that's on the south end of Florin Decor. So lots, two and three will have street access off of, or street frontage onto, onto that Luna Vista Drive. Lot one, well, there'll be a kind of an extension of a, of a private roadway of the Seema Vista, which is that, you know, north, south street on the, you know, the west side of Florin Decor. So there'll be, what you're seeing in gray there, the kind of, the L shape in gray is extension of. is extension of the roadway in the alignment of Seema Vista. And then there's a kind of a anticipated, it's a back of house access drive for the future of lots four and five. And the applicant's presentation has a diagram that is, will help you understand the unique thing that they're planning on for lots four and five. But right now, because of the minor subdivision process, it's quicker and easier for them to create these five lots fairly quickly while they're in the process of the Ladera South major subdivision, which ultimately lots four and five are anticipated to be replatted into larger lots for two big box stores that will be anticipated to take up, you know, not only the current lot four and five, but, but further south of there. And I think I'll let the, the diagram that the applicant's going to present kind of help you understand what, what that's about. The minor subdivision has several review criteria. And we've, staff has gone through several rounds of review. And we've, we've come to an agreement with the applicants on, on the layout and all of the specifics. And so they are satisfying all of the review criteria. And so staff recommends approval of the Ladera third minor subdivision with the one condition that, that staff and the applicant can work together to address all the minor non-substantive, you know, the final resolution of all of the, kind of the outstanding minor issues. And with that, I have a flash drive with the, the, let me just add in here, the applicant's presentation.
You ready? Hi, I'm William Welch. I'm the program manager for Ladera. The address is 7785 Highland Meadows Parkway. So the map, like Troy said, there's a little bit of mind stretching that has to happen for this. So we're taking lot four from filing one and we're carving it into five lots. The three lots to the north in the red box will be finished lots. Those are lots that we have been extremely actively working on and doing economic development on. And we have believed as soon as we can get those lots created, that we've got three golden egg kind of facilities that want to go in there. They are restaurants, they are casual restaurants, they are, they are nationals. They are people that, that are going to be, I think you guys will all be very, very excited about. So we're really pushing to get those done. As part of this, the, the lots four and five, which is the south end, we're plating and we're meeting all the requirements. We're providing access and we're doing all the things, but those lots are just work in process. The blue box around that is what's coming to you. It'll be on your desks in a couple of months as Ladera South subdivision filing number one. That creates the two big retailer lots as well as the smaller lot in the corner. Those lots are the golden eggs sitting on the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. So, so those are the ones that we really are anxious to get going on. And so we, we have been working with staff on both filing, on Ladera filing number three and now the new Ladera South subdivision filing number one to get those going. And so as soon as we get this one done, we'll get filing number one in, replat lots four and five to become lots one and two. And then at that point, again, we've got some super people that we're all really, really excited about. The other thing that we're excited about here is by getting those three lots in the red boxes done, and we believe we can get people on them and get them closed. We can quickly start finishing that northwest corner and really get the project to look finished and be finished and have, you know, really great access for the, for Timneth and for the regional people that want to come into this regional commercial center. And with that, us, me, yourself and my team will be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Before we move to questions, I will open it up for public hearing. I don't believe anyone has signed up. But I will now put the call out there. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to council on this? I see no one, so we can now move on to questions. Go ahead, Mr. Councilmember Jenkins.
Yeah, so a couple, I, I understand why you're doing it this way. You've got three businesses that are ready to go into those three northern lots, and that's great. The, I see you're gonna have significant parking and two large retail, regional commercial entities move in there. That would also indicate that Connell Resources will have to move out, correct?
Correct. Before the, the southern end of this starts to get into Connell Resources operations, but.
Do you have a time, timeframe for that? I, I know it's probably contingent upon signing contracts, et cetera, but I think there's a general interest in knowing when.
Jerry's Connell Resources.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry.
Connell Resources, 7785 Highland Meadows Parkway. Actually, this, the lower blue line is still north of where the asphalt plant sits.
Yeah.
We have, this takes up where our office, Connell Resources office and trucking office is right now.
Right.
We have been approved for a new site and we start work on that in August. So by October, we're hoping to have moved out the trucking office. So at that point, they'll hear, clear all the dirt work and everything else to be able to close on those lots. We're in the process of, that also moves, the new site will allow us to set up our new asphalt plant in, for, to be operational in 2026 at the, out of the new site. We will not be removing all operations out of this pit right away because we will still have product down in the bottom and stuff like that. But the asphalt plant operation should be moved by next, early next spring.
Fingers crossed.
Nope, nope. I have contracts. I have, I have a new asphalt plant being delivered to the new site in October.
Oh, that's awesome.
Sale on the current one, so they just have to, to take it down and move it.
Well, congratulations. It's great for the town of Timneth and, and great for Connell Resources as well. So, and great for Ladera. So looking forward to the progress.
Like I said, there will be continued work in the mining area and in the lake area.
Sure.
There's still a lot of.
But it's, it's progress and it's a process.
Yes, progress will be getting the, the regional commercial centers opened.
Yeah, for sure.
That's the real process we're going for.
Yeah, thank you.
Council, other questions? All right. There are no more questions. And is there a motion to approve resolution number 47, series 2025, a resolution approving Ladera subdivision filing number three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion begin with councilman.
Yeah, I think this is exactly what we want to see happen with, with the Ladera property. We want to see regional commercial come in, restaurants, et cetera. And as much as the area has benefited from Connell Resources, we're also happy to see that it has a new home. And that, that property eventually is converted into tax generating properties for the town of Timneth. So I'm, I'm excited about the progress that you guys are making and look forward to trying out the establishments once they open. So I'm in favor of this for sure.
Yeah. No, again, I'm, I'm in favor of it as well. I don't envy your task of finding the golden goose or whatever, whatever you called it. I like it. But, you know, I, I love watching the progress of Respite out there and, you know, getting them some neighbors. And I think you hit the nail on the head. People still ask what's going there, right? So to actually have that kind of complete and see the vision, I think is going to start driving a lot of people. And hopefully, your idea of a golden goose is the town's idea of a golden goose too, and everybody benefits from it. So no, I'm, I'm in favor of this.
I'm also excited to see what goes in there and, and just to see all the, the progress that has been made and continues to be made in that area. It's obviously a very visual area for, for the vehicles driving on I-25. And anytime people can see something coming in, they do question like, what's that going to be? And there's definitely a lot of interest in that. So I will also be in support.
Mayor Proton?
Now just to add, what we're potentially approving here is, is just a simple matter of taking one big lot and making it five smaller lots. And I think, you know, that, that makes sense in terms of what, what would fit into the area there. So I, this is a logical next step and I will support it. So all those in favor of the resolution approving Ladera subdivision filing number three signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right. Ordinance number eight, series 2025, in ordinance adopting the amended purchasing policy. Director Galliardi?
Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing related to the purchasing policy. Just a reminder, council has two ways to influence expenditures for the town. First, by adopting the budget that outlines what we can spend our money on. And then the purchasing policy determines how we spend that money and what limits we have and what ensures most competitive pricing for the town. The, the last amendment to the purchasing policy was in 2020. This chart kind of demonstrates what's changed in the town since 2020. Our budget has increased by $11 million. Our population has close to doubled. We've gone from 34 FTEs to 82. We have a dedicated purchasing position now that we didn't have before. And we also have a purchase order encumbrance system that we did not have in 2020 to track expenditures and encumbrances. When we were looking at increasing the purchasing thresholds, we looked at our comparison, how we compare to other municipalities. Our current delegations for town manager and competitive bidding are at 35,000. And as you can see, that's well below anyone on the chart. We did look at budget size and population size. And what we're proposing is $100,000 purchasing threshold for town manager and a $50,000 purchasing threshold for competitive bidding. That's in line with a lot of municipalities we typically compare to when we're looking at salaries or different things. Mead, Frederick, Superior, Firestone, those are other comparable municipalities that we look to quite a bit. So we would be in line with those. What changes? Town council authorization goes from $35,001 to $100,001. Town manager goes from $35,000 to $100,000. Department heads goes from $10,000 to $50,000. And department delegation goes from $5,000 to $25,000. And the competitive bid threshold goes from 35 to 50,000. I will say that some of those increases look very significant, but I probably should have increased those along the way. We, we should have probably commented on 50 and 75. We're making all of those changes now. But it is something that we'll revisit on an annual basis going forward. And in addition, when we analyze this, we applied the new procurement limits to purchases from January 2024 to March 2025. And town council would not act on approving approximately $1 million in purchases had this been applied. And it's an estimated 4% of all of the purchases that come through town council. The majority of that were purchases of vehicles and equipment. The finance committee did review this policy and recommend approval. They did have one concern relative to transparency and ensuring that council is still aware of what's going on. So as part of the monthly financial report, we'll report on the status of competitive proposals and awarded contracts. And that's all I have.
All right. This is slated for a public hearing, so I will put the call out now. No one has signed up, but is there anyone present that would like to speak on this proposal? See no one, so we will move on to questions from council. Go ahead, Councilmember Jenkins.
Yeah, so it all makes sense to me that you're moving these approval numbers up. I do have a question with regard to competitive bids. Just because it moves from 35 to 50 doesn't preclude going out for an RFP if it makes sense.
Right, absolutely. And we've done that in the past and we still recommend three quotes for purchases over 10,000, which is our purchase order limit.
Got it. Okay, so that's good news. Thanks.
Can you share with us, just for peace of mind, some of the fail safes associated with this too? I mean, even other larger jumps that there, we're not just letting random people have access to 50,000 or 25,000, whatever it may be. So can you kind of walk through some of that?
Sure. Everything starts with the requisition and we do have a purchase order requirement for 10,000. So that's when finance gets involved and we're reviewing to make sure that there's quotes, that it's adequate. Is it something that we should go out to bid? And then a purchase order is generated off of that. That purchase order then commits and obligates those funds. We're watching if something does come in that's over 50,000, that an RFP goes out first. We're not just awarding contracts based on staff recommendation. There are unique cases where it makes sense, in cases of technology or so forth, where we will evaluate that and say, yeah, it makes sense to continue with this vendor and this is why. And those will be justified.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So to, to your point, Jeremy, there, there are multiple people's eyes, staff, looking at every one of these larger purchase requisitions.
Yes, it goes from.
It's not one person, it's multiple people involved. So internally, there's, there are other eyes on, on purchases.
There are. Luke and Jeremy grilled me on this during finance committee in different scenarios.
Right. Thank you.
So I'm guessing that the majority of these items are typically part of the annual budget process anyway. But this would also allow for items that were unexpected, that were not in the current budget to, to move forward without us needing to do that. So if a vehicle dies, then we wouldn't perhaps have to approve that knowing that it's taken all these additional steps and gone through all those checks. Is that correct?
It actually would come back to you. If the department doesn't have enough within their operating budget, we would come back and say, this wasn't a purchase that was anticipated. Do you authorize this?
Okay, and that, so that'll still stay the same?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah. So Lisa, when would, when would these updated policies for this go through our first audit? When would our auditor come in and actually look and see? When would they give an opinion of this and when would they actually look and to make sure none of these changes would have, like, none of these punched through any of our controls?
Our 2025 audit will take place in early 2026. And so they'll evaluate the first half of the year based on our. half of the year based on our existing policy, and the second half of the year based on the amended policy.
Okay, so so next year, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't think you threw up there, but I thought it was a really handy thing that you had in our finance committee, right?
Oh, yes.
So I think in terms of it, there was what, only a handful of transactions that would actually go through this process now? Is that right? So what was it? 12? Was that number that?
Yeah, about.
Yeah. Okay. And and those would all be now approved by Aaron with his signature authority?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And those are, like I mentioned in the previous slide, mainly mainly vehicles and equipment that were authorized during the budget process.
Okay. And one of our largest growing things that happened, at least through Timmouth, is our growth of our police department, the fleet, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Last question for you. How does Tyler kind of fit into this? And how does it help us as we expand our purchasing? What kind of things does Tyler help us with our purchasing?
Yes. Next month, we're going to be implementing automated requisitions. So that's where the authorization starts. Staff enter requisitions in the system, and then there's an approval process in there. We do have approval processes currently, but it's paper based until we get Tyler requisitions up and running in in July.
Okay.
Yeah. And those are based on those thresholds as well. If it's, you know, over 10,000, if it's over 25,000, and if it's over 50,000, all of those authorizations are in there.
Great. So it's all electronic, you don't have to have to track paper. So it's going to get faster and better.
Yep.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Perfect. Thank you.
I presume it would be easy to run reports once it's in automated in Tyler. So you could
Yes.
You could look at it pretty pretty quickly.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And if there's any information that you would like, we'll start with a draft as part of the monthly financial report. And if there's suggestions you have, or if you want to see more information, definitely let me know, and we can make that available.
Lisa, just wanted to confirm that any purchases made under this policy appear in the monthly register that that you publish in your report?
Yes.
Okay. So if anyone had a question, either member of the public or council, had a question about something that was purchased, they could see it there and ask that question.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
All right.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance number eight, series 2025, an ordinance adopting the amended purchasing policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Holt?
No, I mean, I think, you know, you hit the nail on the head. We had great discussion of this in finance committee. I think it makes sense. I think, to your point, some of it's probably overdue. You know, my only concern was the checks and balances and procedures, not just giving, you know, one person, whether that's department head or Aaron or anyone, you know, full access that it's and I think to Lisa's point, too, it's not, we're not going outside of budget, right? So this is just making thresholds more obtainable. And, you know, we still have our eyes on it, as does the community, too. So I'm in full support of it.
May I approach him?
Yeah, I I think one thing that Aaron kind of relates or relays or talks, we talk about a lot is Timmouth is growing up a lot. And I think this is a part of the process of growing up as Timmouth is. How do we make things go faster in Timmouth, more efficient for both council and staff? So I think I'm going to vote in support of this. We've got the controls in place. So I will be supporting it.
Yeah, I'm I'm totally in favor of this. I think the right controls are in place. And to your point about efficiency for both staff and and the council, I think it's a big step forward. So I'll be supporting it.
I also support it. I really appreciated the comparison to communities of similar size and and that, you know, we are have appropriate oversight and are kind of consistent with the industry standard there. I also really appreciate the finance committee taking a look at this. And and I really value their work and input. So with with their endorsement, I'm I'm supportive. All those in favor of the ordinance adopting the amended purchasing policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. With that, we will adjourn our main council meeting. And if everyone's okay with it, we'll just jump right into our Timmouth Landing General Improvement District Board meeting. Is that work? Very well. We'll call to order Tuesday, June 24, Timmouth Landing General Improvement District Board meeting. Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Chairperson, Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Co-chair, Luke Wagner.
Here.
Board member, Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Board member, Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Board member, Lisa Lake.
Here.
Everyone is present. Any requests to amend the agenda? Hearing none. Is there anyone present for public comment? I don't believe anyone has signed up. I see no one. Then we will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of approving the December 10, 2024 Timmouth Landing General Improvement Meeting minutes. Any requests to pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Commissioners, anything to report? I also have nothing. We'll move on to our business items. Business item 6A, Resolution number GID 1, series 2025, a resolution approving the engagement of UMB Bank with respect to proposed general debt issuance. Ms. Galliardi?
I am going to present Resolution 1 and 2 in the same presentation, and then we can vote on them separately since they're related. These are resolutions approving the engagement with UMB Bank and Butler Snow with respect to general debt issuance. The developer has paid approximately $5 million in required infrastructure payments. The total estimated improvements will be over $10 million by the time the project is done. The developer approached the town and requested reimbursement on payments made to date through a debt issuance. The GID is authorized to issue debt and impose an aggregate of 15 mils for 40 years for debt service on these obligations. So therefore, we need engagements with our municipal financial advisor and bond counsel in order to move forward with this. The fee from UMB Bank will be $26,500 for debt issuance up to $5 million. And then Butler Snow as bond counsel's fee will be $45,000, and that's a flat fee. Both fees will be paid as part of the closing costs of the debt. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
All right. Christers, questions?
So is the total mill levy limited to 15 mils?
Yes, for for the GID for these infrastructure improvements.
Just for, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution approving engagement of UMB Bank with respect to proposed general debt issuance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, council or Commissioner Lake? Co-chair Wagner?
I'll buy. We'll support it.
Councilmembers, anything yet? Commissioners? I mean, this is required by regulation. It it makes sense. So to to not do it would be irresponsible. All right. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Resolution GIDO 1, series 2025 passes unanimously. Move on to Resolution number GID 2, series 2025, resolution approving the engagement of Butler Snow LLP to render an objective legal opinion with respect to the proposed general debt issuance. Is Galliardi anything to add, other than what you've already conveyed?
No.
Commissioners, any questions on item 6B?
No, just to comment that it's good that it's a flat fee, which is nice. You know what you're getting into.
And is there a motion to approve Resolution GID 02, series 2025, a resolution approving the engagement of Butler Snow LLP to render an objective legal opinion with respect to proposed general debt issuance?
So moved. I'll second it then, Jeremy.
Moved by Commissioner Holt, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. 6B also passes unanimously, and we will stand adjourned.